All right, good morning, everyone. It is 9 o'clock on January 20th. This is a special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. I will open with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence after asking everyone to please silence your cell phones.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, thank you. We only have one item on the agenda this morning. Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Oh, second.
Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
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 Great. Any community informational items this morning from the commissioners?
No, nothing further to update. I'm updated Tuesday.
Nothing for me?
All right, nothing for me either, thank you. Any commissioner clarifications?
No, thank you.
All right, and then we have public comments. Is there anybody? We don't have any public in the audience. Is there anyone online that is interested in making public comment on items out of the agenda? Please raise your hand. We'll ask you to state your name and you'll have three minutes. Name and address. Don't see any...
I'm sorry.
Anyone, any indication of a desire to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll move into new business. So our business this morning is to discuss the assessor's office operations and potential supplemental support to be provided to the treasurer's office to ensure continuity of services. We have a couple of lines open here and I am wondering if the assessor has joined us Miguel, are you online?
You want me to just...
Watch some of this.
Is the assessor on Zoom or the conference call that we have on in the room? Okay, we've been in touch with the assessor this morning from 6:00 a.m., so we had every indication that he was going to join us.
There's two more.
And I don't see...
Let them join and see if they're on.
Is the assessor online? See someone unmuted, but we aren't hearing anything. Miguel, are you online? We still can't hear anything from iPhone that looked unmuted. Or from 719-486-83...
Star, star.
Can't read the last two numbers. Can you put in a chat for us if... That we aren't hearing... Oops, a couple of folks unmuted. And if the assessor is in the meeting, there's any way to indicate that for us? That would be great.
Just get confirmation from Mabel, if she can hear us.
Hey, Mabel, can you hear us online? I'm picking on you so that we're sure our audio is working.
Yes, I can hear you perfectly fine.
Okay, thank you, Mabel. Thanks, Claire.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to assume that the assessor has not joined us, I suppose. And we do have in the chat, if somebody else comes up, we'll have to re...
Yeah, I can keep...
Redo that chat so that the new participant can see that, if they didn't see the past chat.
Sure.
Items, thank you. All right, so we'll just go into our discussion on the assessor's office operations and thoughts for continuity there and going on. Where do we want to start? We know that Miguel hasn't talked to us about his plan, either for services or for communicating with staff. There's been some issues with communicating with staff and I don't think there's been any resolution as far as his plan or communicating with staff on... Sorry, just looking at the people entering.
That's okay.
On managing the department, or the office, rather. So we want to go into what needs to be done and/or how we want to propose to make sure that staff is supported and items are being checked off the list for the timeline of the office.
So I can start by essentially saying what the assessor's obligations are.
Sure.
In regards to operating his office. And Colorado Constitution makes clear that any office holder is required to devote their personal attention to their duties and to maintain, and the code requires them to maintain office hours, to maintain an office within the county. It appears, based on logs presented by our IT department, that Miguel has not even logged in virtually to the systems to try and, I presume, check his email or, you know, perform any of the duties of his office here. And so it's one of those things where although it's unlikely you'd be able to declare a vacancy at this point in time, it does appear that he has abandoned the performance of his duties here. So that gives y'all a couple of different options, one of which would be to ask the treasurer's office to undertake the assessment duties, because I understand that those are probably the most pressing needs to keep the operations on track with the assessor's office. And so I'm happy to try and answer other questions as to what your options and such are with that, but it seems painfully clear that he is not, here in the county, he's not attending to his duties as the assessor. I think it's incumbent on the commissioners, as the overall authority for the county's operations, to take some action to ensure that the operations of that office are maintained in its absence.
We do have somebody on the line that has changed their name to assessor. Miguel, are you on the line? Would you like to join us and talk about your plan for the office?
I'm trying and I'll let them know that I'm going to the third party.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I'm having to go through a third party because the numbers you gave me did not work, including the conference line that I requested. So I called a friend and their phone worked and they catched me through, so I'm making more than my best attempt, but I've never had a problem managing my office, even when I was on staff and doing everything as the deputy, never failed an audit, still haven't. I doubt you guys really have the authority to pass a resolution. If you simply rescind, I can get back to my office and perform like I always have. I'm one of the best in the industry, never failed. This isn't legal.
Miguel, it'd be great. We are just asking for a conversation, so this is the time to have that conversation with your plans of operating the office and also your plan... Excuse me, Miguel, Miguel, I would really love it...
I don't have to participate.
If we could all just give each other the time to listen and speak, that would make for a most productive conversation.
I was speaking.
I was speaking. So if you could follow me and give us a plan for the operations and services of your office and also, please, not necessarily detailed, or doesn't have to be, but a plan for your communications with your staff.
In person.
Well, come in, we can make arrangements. We have asked you for that, so...
Let's make arrangements to get me back in my office so I can perform my duties as elected, like I always have for 15 years, and I won't hold grudges because I'm bigger than that. I'm one of the best in my industry, I'll repeat that, as it's proved out there. I've done plenty for my community, I don't need to highlight it. And, you know, I've fought for the seniors and veterans and I've fought to not defund my community. If that's worth canceling me for, so be it, I'll hold my head high.
So what, just to comment on that, I mean, you bring back some things from the past and you also said you don't hold grudges.
Definitely.
And I know that participating in those things in the past and currently would be the most productive way to either make a change or have your voice heard, so I'll just offer that advice to you. And if you could please then let us know what your plan is for the operations and meet the timeline and the deadlines of your office.
Okay. Yeah, my plan is to have you rescind your resolution and hopefully avoid, you know, laws to our taxpayers, because that's commonplace for the BOCC. You don't need to highlight them, like you said, don't need to go to the past, and it's a courtesy to you, not me, because my past is clean, yours not so much, but you're going to remove that, I'll go back to work, I'll hire and fire as I teach it because I am elected to serve, isn't that right? I don't work for you, I work for ADR, I have a legal right and authority and I don't have a problem using it. My problem is the illegal action that you take in preventing me from doing my job, interfering with the duties of an elected official is what you were doing right now. Very clear.
Miguel, this is Jeff, maybe just to start having that discussion about...
I'm not going to talk to you, I won't address you, I won't talk to you. Please don't talk to me.
Well, this is a BOCC meeting, I will speak if I want, thank you very much.
You're a liar and you're perjuring yourself and you're slandering me and I'm not going to take it.
Hey, Miguel...
Sort it out in another venue when the time comes and I'll see you there.
Miguel, it seems that we have different ideas of what the next step is. You're clearly stating the rescinding...
You wanted to hear, that's my plan. You wanted a plan, that's my plan.
That is not a plan. You are requesting for us to rescind a statement. Our plan has been to ask you to make arrangements to come to the office and speak with us. I appreciate you joining us today.
What are you talking about? You banned me, I can't go to the office, I'm not going to get arrested. You're not going to, you know, you're not going to get me arrested on false charges.
You are prohibited unless arrangements are made, so let's make arrangements. Are you able to come in today?
No, I'm not.
When are you...
Why not? I'm able to come in when you remove the resolution in public, so people can hear. I mean, you've already planned, I mean, in public, the least you only use that, and you do need me more than I need you. Patrick can't do my job, we all know that. He's there because of who he knows, not what he knows.
Miguel, how, where are you? How much time do you need to come in? Because we can make arrangements for you to come in today.
I'm not in Leadville. I have a house in Leadville, I have houses in many other places. I'm banned, so why would I be there freezing?
So, based on your message to Kayla and I this morning, are you in belief?
Any message.
What are your travel...
Share them, please.
What?
That's, yeah.
Miguel, when do you plan to be back in Leadville?
Whenever you remove the illegal ban that you put in place preventing me from doing my elected duties. So let me know when that happens. Like I said, I hold no grudges, I'll go back, remember? But even if I did, there should be charges, there's not. It's a police motivated hit job, loosely veiled, not my first, just damaging, but yeah, I'm fine. I mean, again, you guys need me. I don't need you. The community desperately needs me. I've always done an amazing job. First ever president from Lake County in the whole state's history, only member, did it in the fastest amount of time in state history, only two years, unprecedented, well-respected in my industry, never a failed audit, not even one recommendation how I can improve in any class. So what are you doing? And why are you doing it? And who's being protected and who's making accusations that were assaulted? I was assaulted by Jeff, I was assaulted by Stephanie. That's the truth. Play the tape. It shows Jeff chasing me into my office. I wasn't pursuing anybody, I was being pursued. I had to lock him out for the safety of myself. That's the truth. Play the tape, you know, stop lying.
We'd be happy to.
Who's he going to save? Let's just be honest. Come on, Jeff, give me a break.
Miguel, I think if the resolution does not need to be rescinded to make...
You know it, I know it. Chris Floyd, you know, maybe in Tennessee this flies, but she's damaging our community, well, our community, it's not hers. I was born there. I care about the people there. She's just there to bilk and bounce like people have all their lives and she's doing more damage than any good she's done, definitely than any good I've done.
Miguel...
I think I've said all I needed to say, so I don't need you willing to help, or you're...
Can I...
Don't worry.
Miguel, one more thing.
Right.
Miguel, the, we need to make arrangements for you to come to this building. I've just learned that there is a temporary restraining order on you by one of your staff and so the resolution that we passed has nothing to do with the ability and the arrangements that need to be made, but we do need to have this conversation with you. And if we can't have it virtually, then please come in to the office. You can come in today.
I can't do it in a building I'm banned from. You're not going to get me arrested. That's your next play to silence me because you don't want the public to hear what you've all done, how you damaged your community, how you defunded it, why we're paying the hospital, why people might lose their jobs there. I beg you, I told you not to do it, you proceed it anyway. I could have prevented this, I don't have any, you know, it doesn't give me any comfort to say I told you so, but I did. I begged you, I cried.
They keep muting themselves so you can't hear what they're saying.
That's fine, they don't want to hear the truth.
Miguel, where is a place that you would suggest meeting were available today?
In public, with security.
When did I hear, did I hear earlier in this meeting?
His best friend was Stephanie.
When and where, Miguel?
I'll think about it, I'll reach out to some people at the state. I would guess it probably should be at the Department of Property Taxation Office in Denver. I'm going to talk to the property tax administrator today and I'll let you know, because the state is deeply concerned with what you're doing.
We've also been in contact with the property tax administrator, so we'd be happy to...
I know the CAA let her use to contact the property tax administrator too, because she is appointed by the governor.
Miguel, it's a revaluation...
It sounds like there's no conflict there.
Miguel, we need, it's a revaluation year. This is critical to our community. It's critical.
I really can't hear you, it's really garbled up, but I appreciate your time, have a good day. Enjoy the conversation, do what's right for your community, don't play politics with our community.
We're not playing politics with our community, we need to have our property valued appropriately and in accordance with state law. That's what we need to have done and you're responsible for that.
All right.
We can't, we, you know, every taxing entity relies on this. It is not just the county, it's the city, it's the school district, it's the hospital, it's the city, it's every taxing entity in this community that relies on this individual doing his job, period. We have an obligation, we're county commissioners, to provide a safe work environment for all staff, regardless of if they work for another elected official or not, and that is not something that I am going to play around with or take lightly. It's a very important piece of creating a culture where people are welcome here to work here. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, that's non-negotiable, I'm not moving on it. And the ball is in his court, we've come halfway, he can, he can take that and he can make arrangements to meet with us, he can provide the security, we'll contact Joanne Groff and we'll figure out a plan from there. If he's contacted her, I'm sure she's aware and can help us facilitate that meeting, so I will contact her today.
I'm also happy, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, Kayla, I fully agree with what you said about the duties of the assessor and the need for the community and the county and other taxing entities and all taxpayers for those duties to be fulfilled. I wanted to come back to this question of sort of how to facilitate Miguel, the assessor, to meet with staff and try to do duties, and I just wanted to make really clear that we have made repeated attempts by phone, by email, by letter, to have that discussion. I also want to make it really clear that the reason why we are in this strange situation where Miguel is not allowed in the county courthouse, where...
Unless he is supervised.
Well, it is because of really a human resources and personnel safety issue. You know, this is what was the basis for the resolution. Since then, there have been further issues that have resulted in a temporary restraining order that we just mentioned. We cannot now by court order simply let the assessor into the office because of that restraining order, but we have to have that discussion of where else could an office be? How is this going to work? Can we address the issues that led to the personnel safety and restraining order issues? The assessor, so far, despite repeated attempts to start that discussion, as we just had in this meeting, where is a safe space? When can he actually be in county to have that discussion? You know, we have been unable to get any answer today or multiple previous attempts to resolve that safety issue for staff in the building. So until we figure that out and until, you know, then, you know, that's like a first issue that has to get figured out before, you know, we can have a discussion about how Miguel might perform his duties. So, you know, I just want to make that really clear, there's really two issues going on.
That's a good point.
Personnel safety and how to resolve that, but we've been unable to have that conversation with the assessor. So then, I mean, that's where we are on the safety issue, and then I think in this meeting we can turn to how to have the assessor duties performed as needed for the functioning of the county and other governmental entities.
Yeah, I just, we've tried and we've tried and we've tried to accommodate by giving software to Miguel that has the proper county programs on it to incorporate valuations for him to do his statistical averaging. He has not taken that, we've offered to have county software installed on his personal computer, he has not responded to that.
He's denied that.
Or he's denied that, I'm sorry. So we're really at an impasse, we don't have a deputy assessor, one has not been assigned, there is nobody to take on those legal roles to get things done that need to be done, notices of valuation, certification of values, there's nobody to handle those, and time is not stopping for us to figure this out.
Right, yeah. It looks like Miguel is still on Commissioner Pfeiffer, thank you for that, so we will wait to understand from Miguel a time and a place that is appropriate, and I am, I think we should go into the conversation of how to make arrangements otherwise in parallel with...
Why is chat muted?
This is not a time for public comment and a free conversation with everyone involved. All right, so as our attorney had outlined in the beginning of the meeting, some of our, one of our options is to, or the treasurer has the statutory authority to take on assessments and then we have the authority to supply them with the resources necessary for that.
And just for the record, so folks will know, that's pursuant to Colorado statutes 30-10-716. If you'd like to interest in that.
And what that allows the treasurer's office to?
It essentially says it is the duty of the county treasurer to assess at fair value the property of any person liable to pay taxes for bid, which the county assessor has failed to assess.
Okay.
So since the assessor has not undertaken performance of his obligations in that regard, it allows the treasurer to pick that up and perform those obligations.
Patrick, I...
Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Yeah, I mean...
If that, if you're ready.
Great, yes. I just want to make sure Patrick is okay with taking on that responsibility because...
Given the support of people who can do that job.
Yeah.
It's not what I know, it's who I know.
Thank you very much. That's what we've heard. We appreciate you very much for taking that on. Yeah, I just, you know, I just want to address one quick thing in the chat about, you know, whose restraining order is it? We're not at liberty to say, that's a human resources issue and our responsibility is to protect those employees and so that, it is just, it just is what it is. That's our responsibility and that's what we're going to do, so...
Once this meeting concludes and it downloads, we will post it to Zoom so anybody can share, or post it to our website so anybody can share it, so the public is well informed.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to request the treasurer to assume and perform the duties of the assessor's office particularly related to the statutory deadlines and duties of the assessment process pursuant to state statute 30-10-716.
Oh, second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Well, I mean, maybe just...
Does that include the community?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
This is a request of the BOCC for the treasurer and, you know, as we were just discussing, we do everything we can to make sure that you have the staff and resources to perform those duties if you choose to accept our request.
I will accept those duties.
Thank you.
Okay.
Until that time...
Yeah, I'd like, I'd maybe like to follow up with another motion to kind of direct staff and the manager to work with everyone appropriate to make for the, well, sorry, for those arrangements while we also await a response from the assessor on some productive next steps. But if there's no further discussion on this motion on the floor, hearing none?
Well, perhaps to the motion you said, I mean, maybe suggest a slight amendment to the motion I made, you know, which is that it would be in effect until the assessor is performing the assessor's statutory duties.
Okay, so adding that clause, very good. All right, is there any further discussion on the motion and the amendment?
None for me, thank you.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I don't think you stuck into it.
No, I did.
Oh, you, yeah, sorry, I did.
Thanks, Tracy.
I did.
Very good.
Okay. All right. All right. All right, well, we'll conclude and-
Are we going to do a follow-up with, like, we'll move those duties back to the assessor's office once we're able to connect with Miguel and get a plan in order for him to do his duties?
Yeah, I mean, this, I, that is, this is, as Commissioner Feeler said, kind of meant to be an interim solution until we can figure out an appropriate method and line of communication and get some sort of plan outlined from the assessor.
Miguel, there's, there's still, I think that you're still on the line, there's still the ability for you to log into your county email and workspace and communicate that way, as we've said multiple times to you. You can contact our IT department if you need your password reset, but we haven't seen any activity on your account for months. So you are free to do, to do that if you want to.
And to add to that, I mean, in terms of physical office space, we are open to any solution, you know, that's consistent with the current county resolutions and what we understand to be temporary restraining order. You know, we will set up a physical office that works, you know, to meet the statutory requirement of, or constitutional requirement of, you know, tending to your duties in county. But we need to have that discussion and we just have not had any response on engaging in a discussion of a solution and what would work.
Okay.
And to be, just to be clear, the board of county commissioners did approve a budget that fully funded the assessor's office and does provide the assessor with an office. It is in this building.
And an additional report?
Yeah.
The other thing I was going to use in lights to the treasurer's request for staffing, just in mind that the county handle policies allow for temporary assignment of employees to cover county operations. So it would be within your authority to temporarily assign staff from the assessor's office to assist the treasurer's office with those obligations.
Very good. All right. Anything else to adjourn?
I guess one, one practical question maybe for Tim is if we do follow that of temporary reassignment of staff to the treasurer's office, do we need to do any budget amendment or, you know, supplemental budget to cover that? Or you can, just a admin question?
Yeah, no, I think time will continue. You know, paying the assessor office staff, that would be assessor's budget.
Okay.
I don't think there's any reason to do a supplemental budget for any office in the county at this point. The assess request that, I'm happy to walk them through the budget process.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, at 9:33, we will adjourn.